This is Orlando. This is where we believe in magic and fantasies and wishing upon stars and the power of the imagination. This is where we dream, where we think smarter and play harder. So if you think you know all there is to know about Orlando, you're in for a big surprise. Because until you join our community and see all the reasons we're amazing, you don't know the half of it.
I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. Tonight, we have invited somebody well-known to all of us and somebody we're very fond of, and I think I speak for all of us when I say we're so very, very proud of her this evening and the award that she has won, which I'm going to brag on her a little bit more in a minute. But Sarah Ah, who is here tonight, is going to be leading us in our pledge and our moment of silence, and then we're going to talk about the award that she has won that has just made us shine through her advocacy. So Ms. Ah, welcome. If you could come on up to the lectern and lead us in the moment of silence and the pledge.
Will you please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Stay up there, Sarah. We're going to brag on you a little bit here. Thank you, Ms. Ah, for being with us tonight. Sarah joins us because this year, she is the 2015 Adele Graham Award recipient. For those of you who are not familiar with the Adele Graham Award, it is named after the former First Lady, Adele Graham, the wife of former Florida Governor and former U.S. Senator Bob Graham. Adele was passionate about the importance of all school districts having an organized school volunteer program. And Ms. Graham recognized the value in all districts having professional staff, such as our very professional Sarah Ah, and the financial resources committed to recruiting, training, and recognizing volunteers. In her mission to grow such programs in school districts across the country, Mrs. Graham developed an award to reward the leaders in this mission. And we are very, very proud to say that Sarah Ah has been recognized for her leadership and sustained support of the school volunteer program this year with the 2015 Adele Graham Award. Sarah received her award from the Florida Association of Partners in Education. Since 2010, Sarah has been the district coordinator for our Partners in Education program connecting businesses with our schools. And as all these board members know, and I'd like the entire public to know, every year, we have a wonderful recognition ceremony hosted very graciously by SeaWorld Entertainment out at SeaWorld. And if you ever have a chance to go to that, and you haven't been before, I would strongly encourage you because it will become very, very apparent to you just what a good job our Partners in Education program does under the advocacy and leadership of Sarah Ah and really developing wonderful partners in education at all of her 186 traditional schools. The Partners Program combines community volunteerism, workforce development, and cause-related marketing with the goal of improving student achievement. And Sarah leads more than 200 school-based coordinators and 100 community partners in our Partners in Education office. And not only that, but she is a mother of an incredible 12-year-old volleyball player, and I only know that because he plays with my son. So Sarah, we are very, very proud of you, and I know some of our board members would like to make a remark or two. Let me go to Ms. Flynn first. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Sarah lives out in, or Ms. Ah, lives out in District 2. She lives actually just down, really, down the road from me. And so for a long time, you know, Ms. Ah has really been known as Sarah Awesome. But I've had the chance to work with her on, you know, issues that affect the community and issues here when there's been, like on the UCF/OCPS game, she really made that come together. So I want to just say congratulations, and you are, you're awesome.
I'm going to go off-script one moment as well. When we were struggling a little bit with a relief school out in the southeast learning community, Ms. Ah also, and this was totally separate and distinct and independent from her job, but on her own time took and mobilized that entire community in support of building a relief middle school out in the Avalon area. So thank you for that as well, Sarah. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I certainly wouldn't miss my opportunity to commend one of our fine employees. And I think what you found in her community advocacy is just part of her personality. Whatever Sarah does, she does 110%. And so we're extremely proud of Ms. Ah. Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank you for all the relationships that you've built around the community and around our kids and within our schools. It really has been amazing, and your recognition and accolades are very well-deserved.
Over.
So I really like the term "Sarah Awesome." I'm going to use that. And I just wanted to add my perspective because I first met Sarah as a community member. And as a concerned parent and as a community member, she always made time for us, let us in, was a very valuable advisor as far as how to work side-by-side with the district, and as I like to say, shoulder-to-shoulder. And I just want to let you know that that's something that I learned from you, and now being on this side of the table and watching your level of professionalism and how hard you work, I'm just so extraordinarily proud to work with you. Thank you for what you do for us.
Mrs. Gordon.
Well, thank you. I think your hard work just paid off, and I know that Dylan and his department, all of them, are just very proud of you. You're special. I think you're special. I think you're the only one that really comes and knows all of the board members in a special way. But we really appreciate you and congratulations. One and all.
Ms. Moore.
Well, Sarah, and it's interesting that Mrs. Flynn brought up that you live on the east side, but Sarah is so dedicated. I've had her at meetings in Apopka at 7:30, so you must have had to leave at 6:00 in the morning. So she really is dedicated, and she just has a special way about how she works with volunteers, and that's what makes it work and makes it effective. So thank you, Sarah.
Well, Sarah, that's a first. I don't think we've ever had every board member weigh in. So congratulations. We're so very proud of you, and I know the board would like to, I'd say shake your hand, but we almost need to give a high-five from way up here on our perch, and give you a little certificate of our appreciation if you could come on down by the front of us. Thank you. We have no strategic plan update tonight and no administrative recognitions. Any individual who would like to address an item on our consent or a non-consent agenda may do so by filling out and obtaining a yellow speaker form at the board table. You can obtain that yellow speaker form from Ms. McGill, who is the lady at the far-left-hand side of the dais, and I will call you to speak when that agenda item has come up on our agenda. Please understand that you will have three minutes to address the board and provide whatever testimony you would like to provide us with at that time. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
Chairman, we have one change. That is Item 1407, request to approve sale of a five-acre parcel in the Hungerford Track to the town of Eatonville. That item is being withdrawn to be brought back at a later date.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. Can I entertain a motion to do so? It's been moved by Ms. Moore. Is there a second to that? It's been seconded in by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we are on the consent agenda. We do have a light agenda tonight, blessedly so. Mrs. Gordon, I do think you wanted to make a few comments on 1406 regarding the town of Eatonville?
Right. I just wanted to do that, and Robinson is well-aware of the town of Eatonville and the concerns that have come out of the town and a couple of concerns that we still get. I'm really going to ask, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if the General Counsel could brief us on 1406, because we did have some educational calls in there and a couple of other things, 99-year thing or whatever, so that I was kind of concerned about that they would not be totally annexed out, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're not getting it mixed up with the one that the request for the sale of the five-acre parcel. We don't want any confusion with that. We don't want it to go out not right, because they will call, okay? So if you would allow the General Counsel to just briefly make statements on that and clear up the difference between the two.
Definitely. And Mrs. Gordon, you get just about whatever you want tonight, because her note to me says Billy before the vote. Nobody calls me Billy anymore but my brothers and sisters, so I love that. I was Billy till I was 13. Of course. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so you have two items on there. 1406 is the, there is an existing lawsuit litigation that was filed by the town of Eatonville. It was really not an adversarial lawsuit, but one that was filed with the intention of clearing up the title. That is, there are restrictions on the entire parcel. Those restrictions are there for educational purposes, and so the trust of, the Hungerford Trust, which is working collaboratively with the town of Eatonville and with the school board, needs to lift those restrictions. And this agreement, that's before you, 1406, is an understanding, a settlement that was reached probably several months ago in response to the court saying, "We've had this case for about four or five years. What are you doing with it?" And the parties all know that they want to lift the restrictions, but they hadn't reached a memorialized settlement. They did, and there is no compensation or anything in accordance to that, to the trust, but there is an understanding that they will be compensated at the time of the sale of the entire parcel. So with that being said, they agreed, and they have signed off, and the town of Eatonville has signed off. And so that's why that is before you, because the court has asked that we get this resolved by the end of this month. And so Mr. Paul Marini wants to look good before the court and has, you know, said, "Let's keep that on there." The other item that was removed is a five-acre parcel of the entire portion. There's five acres that the town of Eatonville is asking for the sale to take place to a company that, and the town of Eatonville's already approved this, by the way, last Tuesday night at their publicly-held meeting. The reason you have it pulled is because the trust hasn't had a chance to review it yet. They will review it on Monday. We are in discussions about, there's a billboard on-site, so we need to make sure that what happens to the compensation as a result of that. What's the correct asking price for this portion of it, since it hasn't been appraised separately and so forth? We've calculated what those numbers are. The expectation is that once this is sold, then we will settle with the trust folks, because they are entitled to some compensation for removing the educational restrictions, and then be able to put the entire parcel, the remainder of it, back up for the RFP. I can tell you, we're already out of dates with the memorandum of understanding, but with some deference that we are making progress. They have also hired a consultant, which I think is the same consultant that guided the city of Orlando in developing Baldwin Park, so I see some good progress there. They've hired Tom Wilks and Gray Robinson, which some of you may know is a good firm, and Mr. Wilks used to be county attorney for Orange County for a number of years under Mel Martinez and others. So I see good progress on their end, and that's really the update. So I stand ready for any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rodriguez and his crew for continuing to work so diligently to get all of this moved along. Thank you, thank you. This settlement has been long in the works, and it's a good thing. So thank you, and I look forward to 14.07 coming back in two weeks. Yeah, two weeks. And I know Eatonville is excited about it and looking forward to it also, so thank you.
To a different topic, I also want to thank Mr. Rodriguez. We have been at this and Ms. Fernandez for close to two years now, and it's been a long road, and we are trying, I just want to emphasize this, we are trying as mightily as we can to bend over backwards to work with the town of Eatonville. The sands have shifted beneath our feet a couple of times with changes in politics at the town level, but we are working very, very hard to be a good governmental partner of the town to an extent which, you know, really, I can't even begin to articulate. So Mr. Rodriguez, Dr. Jenkins as well, and I don't believe she's here tonight, but Ms. Fernandez has worked very hard on this, Ms. Fernandez. And one day, we're going to bring this in for a landing. I'm determined before my term is up, so that's a whole 'nother three years, but I'm hoping even before that. But we'll get there eventually. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon, for asking that question. And Mrs. Robinson, you and Mrs. Gordon have been working on it for years and years and years, I know. So thank you. All right, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I wanted to bring the board's attention to another item. It's 7.02. It's the request for approval for implementation of the Cambridge Magnet Program at Colonial High School. And I know we've got, oh, and we've got the Colonial High School principal and assistant principal and members of the coordinator out there and OCPS School Services. But this is a program that sets global standards for international education. It's a very prestigious program, one that sets a very high-aggressive curriculum for the students, a little different. One of the things that sets it apart from possibly some of our other programs is that it gives the student a little bit more flexibility in their coursework, but really sets high standards. So I'm just thrilled to see it get approved for Colonial High School. It's great to be a Grenadier. And then I believe next month, we'll have Liberty Middle School having their Cambridge Magnet approved, so we'll have a nice feeder into that program. But once again, not only for Colonial and Liberty, is that awesome, but it's just another opportunity for our students in Orange County Public Schools. So thank you.
Well said, and I can think of no better location for that Cambridge program than Colonial High School. So go Grenadiers. All right. Any other comments or question on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can I entertain a motion to approve the, it's been moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any further discussion or debate on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right. We are on school board committee reports. Ms. Cadel, do you want to give a communications report this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay. Community Action Board, Mrs. Gordon. Is it in our board docs? Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, you have both. Okay, you have the Council of Great City Schools. Let me just say. Okay, without, okay, there are two reports in the package, but I won't go over them. One is the Community Action Board Report, which is a great report you want to go through. They're doing great things for us, and in order to know what it is, you probably got to read the report. And then the Council of Great City Schools, 59th Annual Fall Conference, that I did attend with the superintendent and Jory Cadel. It was outstanding, and that, almost that entire report is in there for you. And being a librarian, I have several copies of great books that we had an opportunity to be with the speakers. So that's available if you are interested in those books also. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Gordon, for that report. Legislative, Ms. Flynn, do you have any report?
Just very quickly, I want to thank the board members who are going on our visits to our local legislative delegation. They're very productive. We're having very productive conversations with our legislators, and it's, we do have a platform that we give them. We have, you know, four items that we try to explain what our position is, but it's really more of an education that we're giving to the legislators. We're talking about digital classroom funding, the challenges to open boundary enrollment. We're talking about funding for the virtual education and dual enrollment, and the other is in regard to our request, if they could ask the governor, to just stall the grading of the schools for this year. So it's very productive, and again, Chairman, we're going to point to you as encouraging us to do this, and it's, it takes a long time, but it's working. So we have one more coming up, but we have a few more. I think we have about four more to go, but we have one on Friday, so we'd love to have everybody with us. But if you can't, we'll be there. I'll be there. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you, Ms. Flynn, for taking this on. You know, it's easy to have the idea. It's a lot harder to make it happen, and it has been a lot of work, and you go to all of them, but we've had, I think we've had three to four board members at virtually everyone, with the exception of maybe one, and so great representation in the board. And having the principals there has helped immensely.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, while I've gone to the meetings, you know, I have to throw back appreciation to Scott Howitt and Cody Woody and Joseph Morgan, superintendent staff, for really doing the work on arranging the schedules, because that in itself is tough to do. So I want to give them a shout-out.
Thank you again. All right, board members, we're now on Agenda Item 20, policy level or other committee or work session issues you'd like discussed. Okay, Dr. Jenkins.
Actually, yeah, that's why I was pushing.
I apologize. You know, I was saying something out of order there.
We were.
I'm used to skipping, Mr. Rodriguez, but not you.
And we were moving so swiftly. I know we can, we're not close to the record, but certainly timely. So a couple of things I would mention. Number one, I wanted to mention that two board members, Board Member Cadel and Board Member Moore attended with me the National Summit on Education Reform that was formerly Governor Bush's organization. Secretary Condoleezza Rice is the sitting chairman of the board for that organization. We went out to Denver for that event, had an opportunity to share some of the things we're doing around rigor and making sure underserved populations are being served and well-served by some of our higher-level courses, our AP courses. Got lots of positive feedback. But I will tell you, once again, the question came up, how do you make sure some of these things stick? How do you make sure you're really attending to the needs of your children? And I use that opportunity to say once again, we're very fortunate that we have a vision and mission and a strategic plan that is co-owned by board members and superintendent. If you have turnover in leadership, new board members, new superintendents, then certainly it makes it difficult. So I stressed again, the necessary ingredient for our success, they marveled at some of the numbers when they saw the data, the necessary ingredient is a high-functioning board that is in strong partnership and co-ownership of the district's strategic plan, and so I had an opportunity to note that. Secondly, we went to Pittsburgh for, Rob Bixler and I, for OCPS's induction into the League of Innovative Schools through the Digital Promise Initiative that came out of, actually under President Bush, and has been carried on since then, so we were happy to join that group. Thirdly, State Board of Education will be meeting tomorrow, making some determination, voting on the commissioner's recommended cut scores. I want to be very clear, as we saw some folks out in Denver, we said the same, the superintendents have been supportive of the commissioner's cut score recommendation. That is not where we have our greatest angst. If given a choice between her recommendation, which mirrors very closely what was recommended by the panels that reviewed it, the educators, and then the secondary panel that reviewed it, where we continue to still have concerns are around, and because we agree with the cut scores or support the cut scores does not mean we've dismissed all of our concerns about the first administration of the test, of the administration issues and of some of our validity concerns. More importantly, our biggest concern is around the accountability system and how it has just unraveled, and specifically the notion that there would be a forced attempt to administer grades with an incomplete formula. And so none of that has changed. I made very clear, and our organization has made very clear, we support the commissioner's cut scores. They are rational, but it still should be a baseline year or a practice year because of all the other issues that happen. Support the cut scores. Do not believe there ought to be grades administered under an accountability system that is incomplete at best. We believe the issuing of grades, those grades would be of little value, because whatever manipulation has to take place to create grades is incomplete for the formula that is currently in place. And so we're still hopeful that there'll be an initiative, an attempt to revamp, to look at our accountability system and try to make some adjustments and make it better going forward, rather than letting it further deteriorate. And then lastly, I am very happy to tell you, you approved the last board meeting, a new person to my cabinet. He was not here to be introduced, but he is here tonight. I'm not going to put him on the spot to say anything. We do that to principals in general, but we have a new CIO. I'd like for him to stand up. It's Jim Pulliam. Jim comes to us from Wichita State University, where he was CIO, so we are very happy to have his talent added to our cabinet. And before I let go of the microphone, I'd also like to recognize Mike Eugene, who is returning home after lecturing at Harvard. This is a second or third time he's been invited to go and speak to their group around improving efficiencies and our whole KPI system that we have here. That's it, Chairman.
Mr. Pulliam, go Shockers. Welcome to Orange County Public Schools. We're so proud to have you onboard. We hope we keep you for three to five years, minimum. We need a CIO, so thank you. And Mr. Eugene, thank you for always making us look so good. We really appreciate it. Mike, it's one never-ending series of awards and accolades, so thank you very much for that, Mr. Eugene. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Superintendent, you scared us a little bit on this side when you said Mr. Eugene was returning home. We thought he's leaving us. We finally did admit. Yeah, this is home. Actually, I'm going back to policies or requests, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple, but lately, and I have discussed this with Dr. Bernier and Choice and even Mr. Rodriguez, but I think it's going to start coming up a little bit more as our choice options expand, so parents and students are choosing educational options that are outside of their home school. It comes up what those students can participate in at their school, and I think there was a little bit of, probably not on their end, but on my end, because I got in, email about a full-time virtual student with Florida Virtual who wanted to participate in a homecoming event, and I thought she was being denied. She wasn't. I mean, so everything turned out okay, but it just raised the questions, you know, of what's extracurricular, what, you know, what counts as social, what can our students participate? Is there a policy that it goes first to the students who are enrolled if there's, you know, a waiting list or a quota or whatever? So I'm just saying that I think those are going to start, you know, possibly, possibly not, but, you know, we might be seeing those kind of questions on a more frequent basis. I don't know if anybody else has had those, but I'm just thinking that we might need a little bit more clarity upfront, posted on the, you know, posted on their Facebook, not Facebook, but on their webpages or someplace where we can really steer our choice students to.
Great idea. We will look into that, give them more information about what is out there and what is available. We have faced a little bit of the same as parents. I think sometimes at school level, there's not even a great awareness of the virtual options that are open to kids, especially as those virtual options have expanded. I think it's filtering down slowly, but I agree.
Absolutely. Not just the educational options that are out there, but when you become a full-time student outside of your home school, what activities can you come back to? And I think the social activities are the ones that get a little murky. You know, does that count as extracurricular? Does that count as academic or is it purely social? So.
Ms. Cadel.
Mine's not a policy issue, but it's an accolade, so I'm not sure where you want it. Okay, well, we found out a couple of weeks ago that Principal Tim Smith from Winter Park High School has been named the high school principal for the Florida Education Music Association and will be getting his award, it's in January, I believe. And I found out today that our own superintendent is being named Superintendent of the Year by the Florida School Music Educators. So congratulations.
We just need to put SOTI in front of your name from now on, Superintendent of the Year. It's like number five this year, so that's awesome. Congratulations. All right, Mrs. Robinson.
Since we're doing accolades, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that our Howard Middle School Director of their magnet, their visual and performing arts magnet, their director is Clinton McCracken, who's very, we all know Clinton very well. He is the recipient of the Emerging Leader Award at the Arts Schools Network Conference this last week in Seattle. And I have a picture of his beautiful award that he received. I posted it on Facebook. I'll show y'all. So anyway, I just want to say congratulations to Clinton and all the hard work that he put in several years ago with Dr. Cartwright to get that visual and performing arts magnet going. And they brought it from the ground up and it's moving right along. So congratulations, Clinton.
Well, we need to have Mr. McCracken and Principal Smith down here and recognize them at a board meeting, so we'll add them to the list, both of them. All right, Ms. Gould.
Well, many of us were able to make the Education Ally Celebration that the foundation put together this morning. It's very early in the morning, those 7:30 breakfasts, but it was well worth making it to that. We had tremendous philanthropic and community partners and absolutely amazing students and teachers sharing the wonderful programs and things that they're doing. At my table, I had some of the Evans children from the Backstage Program. And Dr. Schugert used this as he was part of the panel with Dr. Jenkins, but he talked about how this student is in her, in the Backstage Program, but she ultimately wants to be an engineer and how important it was that she really understood how that geometry works for building the set and how it all comes together in order to put a production up. And it was, I thought it was a very inspiring morning and I wanted to thank Orange County Public Schools Foundation or the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools, such a mouthful for doing that, but I just thought it was a great morning of showcasing the great work and the wonderful support we get from our community.
Thank you. Great words. Mrs. Gordon.
When I saw Ms. Robinson pull up, they would literally tear me apart. The Florida Association of Media and Education met this week from Wednesday until Friday, and we met at the Rosen Shingle Creek. And Dr. Jenkins and school board members, I would like you to know that Orange County Public Schools librarians and students came away with the Jim Harbin Award. They also came away with Pat Franklin. I'm looking at all this right now. I think, you know, I take a thousand pictures. But Pat Franklin won, I think, the Power Librarian Award again, and the Administrator, here it is, the Administrator Advocacy Award, which is the manager, this is for the state of Florida, instructional materials and library media. Darryl, your principal, won that award. Jose, Principal Advocate for Excellent Award. Jose T. Martinez, Principal formerly of Lake Nona Middle School, currently at Colonial High School. So that, he just laughed, oh my God. Well, there's his plaque. It's on Facebook. I put everything on Facebook, but I was so very proud. I was there to cheer him on. And that was an honor to come away with the state award out of all of the schools that were represented in the state of Florida. So, and they gave billing to both Lake Nona Middle and they also gave Dr. Jenkins and board members billing to Colonial. And the staff were there and the librarians and everything, so it was wonderful. But you're gonna have to find out about the Jim Harbin. I forgot to get the names of all the schools that did participate and came away with winning honors. And I do know Pat Franklin won that, the Power Library Award, which is a big award given to that school. So those are great things that happened while I attended this week, the Fame Florida Media Association Conference, which was held at my favorite place, the Rosen Shingle Creek. Okay? That was... Oh, one other point, Dr. Jenkins, I wanted to thank her for allowing us to meet with the apprenticeship program out at, let me get it right, West I-Tech. And it was, the person in charge of that is Dr., over the technical, Armbruster. Okay, Dr. Armbruster, there you are. Excellent staff. We're getting, remember, we kept asking, I serve on the Community Action Board for you, and they do so much for Orange County Public Schools and their graduates, their parents, and trying to help get parents to get their GED and to become self-sufficient. The nicest thing is that your superstaff from Mid-Florida Tech and West I-Tech, the women are the bomb. They knew what they were doing. They ran circles. All the men were in the room, but those women knew that apprenticeship program. And I already shared with Christine how they are coming into the Zap area, which is Azawu, the Papua Plematangereen area, and how they are going to be working with the Falklift and everything like that. But the apprenticeship program, they'll be meeting again tomorrow, but I want to really thank you for your steadfastness, and Dr. Jenkins, in pulling the unions together, pulling all of those building trades together to come up to benefit our children in the trade profession. So I want to just thank you and hats off to you for that. Great job. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. That's a long time coming to get everybody on the same playing field.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Gould.
I knew I was forgetting something when I, it clicked in when we were talking about the music. The Florida Music Educator, Music Educator Association named Lisa Hewitt from Westbrook Elementary as the Music Educator of the Year. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. She's just amazing and she will receive her award in January, which is very, very exciting. We have a lot of music talent. There's a theme here this evening, which is arts, arts and education, huh? Who would have thought?
All right. Thank you, guys, board members, guys, board members.
Ladies, ladies.
Very casual. Ladies, just, I've handed out the work session schedule, just as an FYI, we do have the joint meeting with the county coming up, as you all well know, next Tuesday. We'll be here at our chambers, trying to figure out the seating. If you haven't been briefed yet on it, I would encourage you to get briefed on it before the meeting by Mr. Rodriguez, so everybody knows sort of what we're going over. That's going to be, I think, a good give and take session, but I think we've done a lot of work, staff has done a lot of work on getting us closer to the finish line. Then we have, we're coming back on the rezoning of the Cade schools, and I just want to thank Mrs. Robinson in particular and Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Cobert on all the work that they've done on that rezoning. It's been widely reported, I think, that rezoning affects, I'm not sure how this number was developed, but 18,000 students, I keep reading, and well over a dozen schools. To get to that rural development workshop, I've been to rezonings for one school where we've had 200 to 300 people in the audience and have only 70 people show up, and 50 of them were there to applaud and cheer on the compromise Mrs. Robinson was proposing. And only have 10 speakers, I think that speaks volumes to the work she's done, to the 12-step plan, and also to the work that our staff has done in getting out there and listening to the community and what their desires are, and even the one or two folks who still had a issue with one small neighborhood. It sounds like those neighbors may end up being accommodated as well. Thank you to your leadership, Ms. Cadel, on that issue as well. So I just think it really has been a job well done by our entire team on what could have been a very tough rezoning is turning out to be very non-controversial, which is nice. We do have that general discussion coming up on November 19th, so I'm hoping everybody really comes teed up. We didn't get to a lot of issues you wanted to talk about at the retreat. I've got a list of them back in my notes, but you may recall, we ran out of time at the retreat. So that's your opportunity to come and just talk for however long you'd like about whatever issues are of concern to you, direction you'd like the board to take. I want to emphasize that. Boardroom art, I want to thank our staff. I don't know who deserves credit for it, but we have the artwork up now in the room. Ashley did that and Scott Evans. Okay, well, it looks wonderful. And Mr. Morris, it looks really sharp with those spots on it, so thank you for that very, very much. I'm still proud of this boardroom even three months later after moving into it. Last announcement I want to make is, if you're not coming, and frankly, I wouldn't blame you if you weren't, I wasn't planning on it, but I got lassoed into, much to my chagrin, and Ms. Gould will laugh because she's participating herself into a sing-off for the West Orange Chamber, but normally I would not even announce that from the dice or announce y'all to come because I certainly cannot sing. I can't carry a tune in a bucket if I had a bucket, but I think you're gonna get a real kick out of the song I'm singing, so I'm not gonna tell you. But let me just tell you, it pertains to our work on this board, and I think you will really enjoy it. So I'm actually excited about it now.
We're not allowed to film it.
Not allowed to film it, but Mr. Rodriguez, you in particular, need to come to this and hear this song. It's close.
What's the date?
November 12th, right after our work sessions. We're gonna book on over there to...
Where is it?
Where is it, Pam?
It's at the Rising Star.
Yeah, it's at a Universal. Trust me, it will be worth your trip.
It's worth it to see that.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Ms. Moore.
With regard to the school siting ordinance, I have been working with several of my municipalities and I was curious if the rest of you have had any of these conversations, but I'm seeing some interest in the municipalities adopting language for school siting as well. For several reasons, they sometimes feel inadequate when charters come, they're just not aware of the depth and breadth of the law and they sort of feel like they're left out there by themselves, so they've been expressing some interest in having some language. And then also, on the private school side, seeing groups wanting to put portables and have these little fledgling startup schools, and they're not really quite sure how to handle that as well. So just wanted to put that in front of you, that it would be exciting that if we could have a school siting ordinance pertaining to the county and all the municipalities as well.
As, I'm excited. I'm hoping it comes to fruition, what we're in discussions with the county about, because I think it will be dramatic improvement. Some of the bigger issues, I will let you all know, I had a wonderful meeting with the mayor about a week and a half ago, and I think Mr. Rodriguez and I and Dr. Jenkins all felt like it went very, very well. And I don't want to say surprisingly so, because we have a great working relationship with the mayor, but some of the issues we thought might be sticking points were actually they were very receptive to. So, you know, one thing that could perhaps come out of that, interesting idea, Ms. Moore, is some type of model ordinance that municipalities could adopt as well. You know, that's something to think about. You know, the three big issues I wanted this board to know that I shared with the mayor, because we don't really get a chance to talk about these things because of the sunshine laws as a group, were number one, the idea of some type of hearing officer or magistrate and early determination of consistency, so we can avoid future battles, whether in the courts or whether at the county commission level. Number two, the whole issue of whether charter schools should belong within the school siting ordinance, and I don't know that we're gonna get any traction there, but one of the ideas I floated about is perhaps we can look at a size threshold. In other words, if you're a charter over a certain threshold size and you would be subject to certain aspects of the school siting ordinance, which just seems common sense to me. I mean, I think most of us would agree, we don't necessarily need a school siting ordinance for charter schools if it's a 300 or 200 student school, but if it's a 1,400 school that's looking at an eight or 10-acre or six-acre parcel, then it just seems to make sense to have some criteria there as well. And then the third big issue, to me at least, and I think this board is just acreage requirement. And that may be the toughest, not the crack, maybe the toughest one to solve. One of the ideas that we've kicked around or I've thrown out there just as a brainstorm is perhaps we look at some type of density threshold. So if, you know, you're building a school out where there's low-density populations, perhaps the old acreage requirements work, but if we're building a school where the densities are what would be defined as urban core, perhaps we have a lower acreage threshold for those schools. Because as we know, and the example I keep using, we're trying to acquire acreage right now for Dr. Phillips Relief High School, and we're looking at 500,000 an acre in this market, and for 60 acres, that's 30 million just for school site acquisition. And the taxpayers, it has nothing to do with the school board, taxpayers can't afford that, and the taxpayers shouldn't be required to afford that. If we know we can build a perfectly adequate school with full facilities and adequate parking on, say, 40 acres or 45 acres or 35 acres. So, you know, we're gonna have to have some flexibility as we go forward, I think, as we grow as a community. I know we all agree up here at this board table, we just can't keep building schools on the same required amounts of acreage that you would expect in a moderately urbanized, suburban or suburban environment when we are increasingly becoming a heavily urbanized metropolitan area. Ms. Gould, is that old?
I am looking forward to this school siting discussion and what all of the next steps will be as we roll it out, because having been in the eye of that hurricane since before I got elected, you know, there's, it is an overlay idea and having an overlay plan is a very good one. And I do think there'd be some buy-in, at least from many of the municipalities I've spoken to as well. But in addition to that, making sure that as we continue to build out all of the land that is available in Orange County, which is getting less and less by the day, that we have a complete acknowledgement and understanding by planners and developers to our needs. So it goes to the, beyond the school siting and the land banking and all of those things that are so, so essential, so we're not in the same situation we were with these two high schools in my area, because Dr. Phillips Relief is mine too. And we are, again, no land available, to our back against the wall with no choices in sites or minimal choices in sites unless things shift in the marketplace. So it's, we've got to have... So it's, we've got to have that flexibility, but we also have to get that buy-in right from the time they foster an idea to build a community in Orange County, they have to know that we're partners in this, and they should be talking to us for planning purposes.
Before I go to Ms. Flynn, I want to remind every board member, because this may be the last chance I get to speak to you before we get to that joint meeting, that we do not expect, and I think we all know this, but let me just reiterate it, we do not expect to have made decisions with finality on the school siting ordinance at that joint meeting. It's part of the ongoing discussion, with the goal being that we have a product that the county commission will take to the county commission, that we can bring to the school board by, in my timeline, I'm looking at Mr. Rodriguez, I don't know if you would agree with this, but by early spring would be optimal. So, you know, when I talk to the media, I'm emphasizing, don't come to this meeting thinking that everything is going to be decided. I think that we're probably in agreement on 85% of the proposed school siting ordinance, but as is typical in the collaborative or legislative or negotiated process, however you want to phrase it, the last 15% is sometimes the toughest, most important issues, and those are still on the table, but this is one step in that process, and hopefully to continue that discussion and come to some agreement between both bodies by early in the next year. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and the rest of my fellow board members, I am not able to be at that meeting, I apologize, but I'm going to give you just a little bit of what I think, I hope, might be asked. You know, there are a lot of plan developments out there that have been approved, and they've got traffic and parking, credits already given to them, and, which is exactly what has happened in my district, is that while we didn't approve the Pine Crest Academy Middle High School charter, the county D R C did approve the building of that school on less than three acres, 110, 1600 students on that piece of property. And the reason, and rightly so, I guess legally, was, you know, charter schools are not included in the siting ordinance, the developer had all his parking and credits issued, I mean, you know, the same impacts that we were trying to mitigate when we were going through with a lot of our parcels just didn't apply there. So I don't know if that's going to play into future, you know, future challenges with charter schools, but I think that is an aspect that we need, I need to learn more about, is what about the developments that are already on the books, and how might that impact where charters are going?
Good points, good points. All right, board members, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. Mr. Fritz, Dr. Fritz, can I borrow you?